Well, hello, and thank you for coming tonight. I'd like to call the February 4th, 2025 Regular Council Meeting and Special Housing Authority Meeting to order. Let the record reflect that our council members are all present tonight. Votes this evening will be recorded using the electronic voting system. Public session. At this time, the City Council convened to consider public matters. Members of the public may speak on any matter listed in the agenda. If you wish to speak on any matter listed on the agenda, please fill out a blue speaker card and provide it to the city clerk. Also, provide the city clerk with any written materials you wish to distribute to the City Council for any item or any general public comments at this time. As a courtesy, they will be distributed to the City Council. When it is your time to speak, the city clerk will call your name to speak during the given item. As required by state law, please limit your comments on agenda items or specific items at issue. If you have any comments on items not listed on the agenda, you may make public comments on those at the time allocated for general public comments. Finally, address your comments to here, the City Council. A staff will respond to questions from the City Council and not from the public speakers. When the city clerk indicates that you have the green light is on and illuminated, your three-minute period will have started. Thank you for coming tonight. Invocation tonight will be led by Sienna Cummings, Orange County Sheriff Department. Thank you for blessing our evening and our city.
Thank you for having me. Would you please join me in prayer? Dear Heavenly Father, before the City Council meeting begins here this evening, I want to take a moment, as I usually do, to acknowledge the freedom we have been granted in this country to stand together openly in corporate prayer regardless of where each of us stands spiritually. That is a privilege and an honor, and I thank you for making it possible. Please cultivate a spirit of mutual respect, cooperation, and efficiency among those gathered here this evening. I thank you for those who have intentionally responded to their callings through their service as City Council members, as first responders, as law enforcement officers, and as community members who show up to these meetings to take an active role in the city that they call home. Please unify their individual contributions to collectively benefit the city of Lake Forest and protect and provide for each of us as we go home later this evening. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you for that wonderful prayer. Tonight, our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Boy Scout Troop 628. Gentlemen, if you could proceed forward, thank you.
May you please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. You may now be seated.
Gentlemen, if you guys want to come up for a picture with us, please.
All right, you ready? Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
That brings us to El Toro Student Liaison. Maya Lowry, are you here?
Okay. Hello, City Council. Here is a little recap and future plans for El Toro High School. First, El Toro had their showcase, which was a great success. Lots of eighth graders attended, and special programs featured Avid, AP Capstone, MUN, and STEAM. There was also our various VAPA programs like ceramic, ceramics, photo, choir, and more. Eighth graders could meet coaches and captains of future sports they want to play, and overall it was a great time. Next up, we have an exciting upcoming event, Winter Formal. Winter Formal is Cinderella-themed this year and will be at Coto de Casa Country Club. There will be a DJ and live band, horse-drawn carriages, rides, photo booth, 360 photo booth, casino games, LED video wall, pool and ping pong, soft drinks, ice cream cart, smores bar, and a chocolate fountain and assorted desserts, which will be very fun. This past month, our sports have been incredible. Tomorrow is National Letter of Intent Day to officially sign our chosen athletes into their respective universities. They will give a speech to thank their families and supporters. Next, El Toro Pep Squad had their senior night yesterday, honoring their 20 seniors. The seniors then performed a surprise dance for the audience. Both boys' and girls' wrestling have had a great month. El Toro Girls' varsity and JV team took first place at Coastal Classic in San Diego after competing against 30 of the most competitive schools. Thirteen girls also placed in the top five of their weight class, taking home individual medals as well. They also won against Tribuco on senior night, which locked them in for CIF dual participation. Girls' wrestling took first place at Bishop AMAT High School, and nearly half the team brought home medals and helped secure the team's victory. All 14 girls qualified for CIF. Good job, girls' wrestling. At league finals, 26 of our boys' wrestling team walked away with medals, and 12 qualified for CIF. As for our soccer program, girls' soccer won league, and for the first time in eight years, they qualified for CIF. Boys' soccer also won league and qualified for CIF, which is very exciting. Girls' water polo senior night was on the 23rd, and last week, they had a huge win, which also qualified them for CIF. Fairytale Diner Night, finally, Fairytale Diner Night is hosted by choir this Friday. That's all. Thank you so much.
Wow, let's go Chargers. Great report. Congratulations. Okay, that brings us to public comment. If you'd like to make a comment, please fill out the blue speaker card and turn to the city clerk over here. Comments are limited to three minutes of unrepentant time per person. The council and staff will not respond to questions or comments during the public comment period. If you leave your contact information on the blue card, staff will contact you on the addressed issues that you rise on your comment. When you are called to speak, approach the podium. Your three minutes will begin when the green light is on and public comment is illuminated. Your green light will remain illuminated for two minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute to conclude your comments. When the light changes from yellow to red, that concludes your comment. A timer will know... Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments received?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have several requests to speak tonight, starting with Reed Buck, followed by Andrew O'Connor, followed by Andrea Alexander. Mr. Buck?
It's good you're watching that. There it is.
Thank you, Mayor Voits, Mayor Protem Pecano, council members and staff. My name is Reed Buck, and my partner Lindsay and I were very excited to purchase our first home in Lake Forest this past summer. We are overjoyed to be in a community with such incredible natural spaces and beautiful homes. I'd like to speak today regarding your recently passed legislative and regulatory platform. I recognize I'm a little late in sharing my comments in opposition, but I'd nonetheless ask you to take in the nature of my criticisms so that you might understand the political philosophy of a growing group of your constituents. We are younger, decidedly more progressive, and we'd like to ensure that our needs and goals are being met by this council. The majority of my concerns were with Policy Statement 3, which regarded economic expansion, taxation, and local businesses. I personally do not support the lowering of taxes across the board. Taxes are an important source of revenue for the city, and while we may be frustrated at the way tax dollars are spent or wasted, that is an issue that can be brought up at these council meetings. Depriving the city of revenue is not going to solve problems, it's just going to generate them. This is also true for property taxes. Lowering property taxes is not the way to get more people into homes. Providing more robust laws preventing short-term rentals, banning Airbnb and investment-based companies, and building more affordable housing are much more effective policies. Mayor Protem Pecano, I recently was told that you have worked very hard on affordable housing initiatives, and I'd like to commend you for that and continue to ask you to be a voice for those citizens like myself who otherwise might not be able to afford housing in our beautiful city. Policy Statement 3.4 says that this council supports any measure to increase the voting threshold for implementing new taxes. Let me ask you this, council members. If you trust the citizens of your city, why would you ever be opposed to lowering vote thresholds for any vote? This signifies a fear in the council of putting decisions in the hands of their constituency. You speak over and over about keeping decision-making local and taking control away from state government, which I support as a matter of principle. However, if the purpose of that shift is to simply accrue more power for this council to wield unilaterally without the voice of its constituency being honored, then I disagree in the strongest possible terms. Other parts of your policy statements include the slashing of regulations for businesses and environmental safeguards. I strongly oppose these guiding principles. Lowering the minimum wage and giving businesses greater freedom to cut costs and size up regulations is a strategy that will only serve to stratify the lower, middle, and upper classes in Lake Forest. There are many ways to help struggling businesses recover in a post-COVID era, and you are actively choosing the ones that hurt the working class. Finally, I'd like to note that Guiding Principle Number 1 focuses entirely on law enforcement as the sole means of ensuring public safety without making mention of other necessary means such as robust mental health services, community liaisons for English, non-English-speaking residents, social workers, and other protections for our most vulnerable community members. My partner and I are glad to be in Lake Forest, but we are not glad to be in a situation where our own city council maintains a political philosophy that prioritizes policing over community health and economic gain over protections for people who work and live in this city. Thank you for your time. Appreciate you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Buck.
Next speaker is Andrew O'Connor.
Andrew O'Connor, Foothill Ranch. First, I'd like to give a shout out to the building department, as they helped me through the process of getting a building permit, and I think it's going to be finalized this week. So, thank you to Inner West and the staff for that. A bigger shout out to Sheriff Barnes. I was pleasantly surprised to see him on TV today in Washington, DC in front of the Senate testifying on the scourge of fentanyl. And one number just really popped out to me. It's very sad. In the county of Orange, 600 people have died of fentanyl poisoning. I'd like to say rest in peace to those souls. Sheriff Barnes did a great job representing the county, but he's got his hands full. But with the strong leadership we have from the Trump-Vance administration, I believe we're going to turn the tide. The last council meeting, Mayor Voits, didn't even know that the new code enforcement officer was a full-time or part-time. Mary, I expect to be on top of those. Councilman Serbo, you had time to travel to the Richard Nixon Library in Yorberlinda, a 50-mile, one-hour trip. However, you still have not had time to have a pop-up event for Foothill Ranch residents. There's a meeting room at the library that's more than welcome to use. Dr. Gardner used it quite a bit, and had good turnouts. At the last meeting, the one hour, 10 minutes time spent, you claimed I was disrespectful, and nothing could be further from the truth. I just present facts, Councilman, that's all I do. I don't know what you're afraid of. You don't have any updates on the chaos at Whiting Ranch, afternoon pickup from the elementary school? We saw male vandalism, e-bike chaos throughout the shopping centers. If you reach out to the Foothill residents, Michael Watts from the Upper Borrego Park vandalism, Jeanne Calabrese, male theft, Twee Tran, male theft, Nevmarkevich, who says, "Where are the police?" I appreciate you participating in the League of California Cities on home severity, canceling homeowners' policies, but I think, and I present this to you, is I think a more proactive approach would be better for your neighborhood in Portola Hills, as well as my neighborhood in Foothill Ranch, to work with both the county and the fire department to take care of the Barancas. The biggest thing that we learned about the Palisades Fire and the Eaton Fire is the growth of the forest. And right here in Whiting Ranch, the county's not doing anything. Mayor Voits, you need to work with Wagner. How come the forest floor over here is not being taken care of? You need to get on top of that. As far as D2 Councilman Benjamin Yao, I brought your attention several times the deteriorating condition of Bag Parkway, especially on the edges of the Orange County Transportation Bus Stop's concrete aprons. Last month, the Water District had to do an emergency repair because of underground water mainly, and Rancho South and Emmy Way.
Mr. O'Connor, you have to conclude your comments.
Okay, well, I have notes here for all the councilmen. I hope you take action. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Andrea Alexander.
Good evening, Mayor Voits, council members and staff. It's been a long time. Nice to see you.
Hello.
I'm here to talk about the legislative platform. I'm a little late, but I'm here about it anyway. State mandates. Nobody likes them, especially when they're unfunded. I think we can say that without state mandates, affordable housing projects would be nonexistent. We would still have our homeless liaison officers collecting people and placing them in shelters, which are not permanent housing, and fail to provide the basic needs of housing first. That, by the way, came from the George W. Bush administration in 2004 after massive studies indicating that this was the best approach. And here we are in 2024, still hashing this out in some cities that refuse to comply. Even though our city has provided several affordable housing units, we still have not met our RENA numbers for low and very low-income housing. I think we should be focusing on that in our future developments, please. Furthermore, when other cities fail to provide affordable housing, that places a heavier burden on the cities that do. Mountain View's waiting list was open to people from anywhere, as long as they met all the requirements and were next in line on the list. I appreciate that. We need other cities to do their fair share, hence mandates. The other subject I want to talk about is local control. In a perfect world... By the way, I loved how local control permeated the platform. Every single item on the platform had local control in it somewhere. So, in a perfect world, local control would be ideal, but alas, the world is not perfect. As we recently witnessed, when the former chair of the Board of Supervisors pled guilty to bribery and fraud when he enriched himself and his family using COVID relief money designated for the most needy in our communities. Federal oversight and the FBI got involved, and the story goes on. We all know it. You can Google it. So, let me ask, would you turn over your money to an agency and not want to have control over how it is spent? You need to have earmarks, restrictions, accountability, transparency, and audits to avoid what happened at the county level. So, I'm not for local control. We also need oversight. We always need oversight. Greed is very powerful, not just monetary greed, but greed for power as well. Now, disaster preparedness. I'm not sure this was on the platform, but I want to address it. I watched the mayor's minute about this, and he assured us that the sheriff's department, the fire department, water department are ready for any upcoming disasters. I found it interesting that he left out Southern California Edison. Not long after the last wildfires that threatened Lake Forest, Edison came to us with a PowerPoint presentation showing the improvements they had planned to harden the wiring and strengthen the grid and some other things. In regard to that, I sent a request to the council to ask Edison to come back to us and give us an update. I never heard anything more about it. Our Lake Forest staff always provide us with an update on planned and ongoing projects, but yet we have yet to hear from Edison. I want to thank you all for serving on this council. I know it's not an easy job, and you're working hard to serve our best interests, but you have to know that as members of this wonderful Lake Forest community, we're thinking of the city's best interests too.
Thank you for concluding.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next group of speakers will begin with Victoria C., followed by Sid Marashi, followed by H. Dan Salisbury, and finally, Bob Miller. Victoria?
Good evening, esteemed council members. My name is Victoria, a resident of Lake Forest for over a decade now, and I live by Geronimo Road, and I'm here to talk about a fence. I can't help but notice on the way here the irony of the situation, how beautiful our city hall is and everything it's around here, and we're here to literally beg for a decent, sturdier, and more permanent fence of about... We're talking 700 to 800 feet of fence. Nothing fancy, just one that will serve the purpose. This fence is supposed to serve the primary purpose of defining the community boundaries, enhance security and privacy for residents, while also contributing to the overall aesthetic appeal and visual identity of the neighborhood by creating a cohesive look and maintaining a sense of order. At the moment, it is not serving any of these purposes at all, but what it is, is it displays the cities and our community as a whole failure to serve the communal objectives. There is the regular traffic from the school that we already have to deal with. Along with that comes the... Not all of them, but reckless parents that park wherever they want, and then students that ride their electric bikes from all over the place, you know, coming from different directions. And then, on top of that, increased traffic from the Amazon Fulfillment Center, and then, of course, there's the regular motorists rerouting from other roads to get to the freeways, 405 or 505. We're here... All we're here for is to ask for a decent, sturdy, and more permanent fence being installed, because currently what we have is flimsy, short wooden poles of about 3 to 4 inches in diameter, and dark green garden... I have even a better garden... wires, and some hedges that are struggling to survive. 10 years I've been staring at them, right? Struggling to survive. No one comes and checks, but we know they get watered. They just go to waste. It's a complete eyesore. The new fence could help heighten security, ensure privacy, or foster a harmonious aesthetic within the neighborhood, and really, that's all we're here to ask for. Thank you all for your time, and we look forward to a favorable action and resolution to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Next speaker is Sid Marashi.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members. My name is Sid Marashi. I've been a resident and homeowner in Lake Forest for the past 10 years. My property is located on Geronimo Road between Shadowfax and Eldamar, just a block away from Serrano High School. For years, my neighbors and I have had to repeatedly repair the deteriorating city-owned fence adjacent to the properties while awaiting action from the city. Unfortunately, this fence has continued to degrade, becoming both an aesthetic and structural concern. In current state, not only diminishes the appearance of our neighborhood, but also fails to provide adequate protection against the increasing noise and pollution from Geronimo Road, which has become a heavily trafficked alternative to 405 freeway, as we all know. We also face ongoing safety hazards, including speeding high school traffic... or school traffic, I'm sorry, and parents parking in front of our homes to drop off and pick up students from Serrano Middle School. The flimsy fence has also led to safety concerns, as children frequently climb over it, jump over it, and others ride electric bikes at unsafe speed along the route of this fence. We urge the city to take prompt action by replacing the deteriorating fence with a durable and visually appealing alternative. Ideally, constructing a short wall would significantly enhance safety, improve residents' quality of life, and help maintain property values. We appreciate your attention to this matter. Look forward to your response regarding a viable solution, and still within the green light.
Thank you, Mr. Sid. And I'll send you an email tomorrow. I'd like to come out and see the project, and so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I wish the city employee in charge would actually visit. I think his quickest approach...
We'll handle that with... I'll send you an email.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker is H. Dan Salisbury.
Hi, I would like to thank the council, the mayor, and the employee staff here. I make this real short, but I've lived in this community for almost 40 years. I live in the San Rita Ridge track. I'm right from Lake Forest to El Toro Road. There's a lot of traffic there, and as they started building more apartments, they started parking on both sides of the street, and they do drive fast. I've seen over the period of a few years, there's literally cars parked all the time because it got too many people living in these apartments. They don't have enough parking spaces. I was exposed to a problem four years ago when a car was coming down Osterman, coming to Pittsford, went airborne, hit the curb, and went up in the air, did not hit the wall, and went into my backyard. They had to get a crane to remove that car. Now, they've had another car flip over on that street, right between Lake Forest and Osterman. You've got to go pretty fast to flip a car over. Last night, the lights were going on around 7:00, and I saw fire trucks, police. They were amazing. And I looked down, and I saw a dead body. He had just his shorts on, no shoes on, and he was laying on the ground. And there was a car that was involved parked on the other side. I thought he was dead. Called my neighbor. I said, "This guy's dead." Well, what happened was, they got him to kind of move. He came around, but he was not moving. The car that hit him, he was on an e-bike at night, no helmet. I don't think they have to wear a helmet, but they finally got him to move. I don't know how he is, but I thought he may have some brain damage because he was in bad shape. When that car hit him, no brakes, he went up in the air, broke the windshield out, and put a big dent in the roof. He flopped over. So, I think we have to think about the speed limits. I think maybe a trailer with the blinking lights. I know they go fast down that street. It's got a radical turn, and it's not getting better. They're driving all the time really fast, and I think that maybe the police should maybe put some more police out there. It gets crazy when the kids get out of school. They need a double line so the kids can walk across the street from Osterman. They got a street there of Osterman on Pittsford. They just have to tell the traffic, "Hey, I'm going across." There's no double line. So, I think that there's some major issues there, and I don't know how the guy... I don't know if he's got brain damage, but he obviously was in very bad shape. Thank you for helping to do the talk.
Thanks for raising those concerns. Thanks for your comments.
Our final speaker is Bob Miller.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Mayor. I'm a 39-year resident of Lake Forest, live in San Rita Ridge as well. We love living here. Thank you for your service and being such a fiscally responsible city. It's nice to know that we are debt-free, but the city still does great things for its residents. Snow day, the 4th of July parade, concerts in the parks, so it's a tremendous place to raise a family, and we raised two wonderful girls. I'm a neighbor of Dan's who just spoke. We had a car versus e-bike accident behind our house last night. It was pretty gruesome. We have major traffic issues on Pittsford between Lake Forest... or, excuse me, yeah, between Lake Forest and North Crest. The speed limit's 35. Most cars are doing between 45 and 60 miles an hour. I witness it every day. 20 years ago, we had no cars parked... Cars were not allowed to park on Pittsford around the blind curve, and then the apartments... And then the apartments were built, overbuilt, and they don't have enough parking, so then they started allowing parking on the street. So that's a blind curve at 35 miles an hour. And then you have Pittsford Park. And who goes to parks? Kids. And they're parked on both sides. My wife and I walk every day, we witness kids and parents running back and forth across the street trying to dodge cars. And next to the park is a school, more kids. It's a dangerous situation. I would like to see the speed limit lowered to 25. That way, the cars would be limited to 45 instead of 60. So, and maybe a crosswalk going across Pittsford at Osterman that might have a lighted LED flashing thing like is down by the school. So it's just a dangerous situation, and we don't need a fatality on that street. So thank you for your time, thank you for your service to the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your concerns. Thank you for your comments.
That completes our public comment.
Well, thank you, everybody, for your public comments tonight. That brings us to consent calendar. We're going to do a conjunction. All matters listed in the council consent calendar and the Housing Authority consent calendar will be considered routine, will be enacted by one vote. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the City Council or staff request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Have there been any requests?
I do. I have requests to speak on items two, three, six, and seven.
Two, three, six, and seven. Okay, council.
I'll move in remainder.
Thank you. A second. Call for the remainder.
That motion passes unanimously.
There's, on the consent calendar, there is a warrant from the register on the, from the County of Orange. I am an employee from the County of Orange, but I do not work for the departments that generate these warrants. Because the county is a public agency, and because I do not work for the departments in question, I have determined I have a noninterest in these warrants, and will be voting on them. Thank you. Now, our first.
First speaker on item number two, Andrew O'Connor.
Andrew O'Connor, Fiddle Ranch, specifically to Mayor Protem, District 5 Councilman Pecano. Sir, I'm asking if you had a chance to reflect on the last meeting. A few minutes ago, she's not here, she's just left, we heard the invocation from the chaplain, Serena Cummings, the Orange County Sheriff's Department. You bowed your head to God, asking for wisdom, direction, empathy. Do you see my side of the Andy sucks, D.C.L. not being in First Amendment right, but actually a resident being bullied by your supporters? Are you happy this has escalated to your supporters are now wearing T-shirts that says "Andy sucks"? January 28, 25, I don't understand how you believe the Second Amendment rights were violated when your supporter from your district actually bullied me with a decal that reads "Andy sucks." This has nothing to do with free speech. I was wondering why, as a City Councilman, a Marine, a retired sheriff deputy, you didn't tell the residents that they're out of bounds. Residents are allowed their free speech. However, you thought this type of behavior is appropriate. I expect your reply should have been, "Mr. O'Connor does many things for the community, and you're out of bounds, and you should knock it off." Actually, I see this as a form of bullying. If you're out shopping in your neighborhood, and people around one person yelling and taunting to them, would you step in and say something? As a Christian, as a Marine, as a deputy, or would you walk by? Well, that's what you did to me. You're allowing your supporters to bully me. Sucks is an expression of disappointment. What actually did I do to disappoint? What did I do to disappoint? This has yet to be explained. Submitting 294 Elf tickets to make our community better, safer, prosperous? That sucks. Attending council meetings and asking why the city manager goes over budget, is not transparent, hides purchases, Best Best and Krieger, has yet to explain the $1 million they charge us annually? This sucks. I asked Councilman Pecano to host a pop-up event, D5, to discuss homeless, which he failed miserably, explaining the care corps on a broadcast, and being a steward, but I'm a steward for Blaze Bernstein's Rock Garden up here in Borrego Park? But I suck? I don't think so.
Thank you for your comments.
Speaker on item number three is Andrew O'Connor.
Like I said, I like reviewing the warrant register to see how actual money is spent. It's kind of eye-opening. Congratulations, City Attorney, hit the million-dollar mark in 2024. Can you believe it, folks? $1 million we paid him for legal fees. That's $100,000 a month. I've asked before, and I'll ask again. What are we doing that we spend $100,000 a month in legal fees? Okay? Just incredible. Mayor Scott Voits, he put a request for mileage, $52.39. You're the only council member who requests mileage. I just don't get it, Scott. $4,500 to shelter clean, you know, guys that clean the bus stops, things like that. You ever notice they don't clean the tops of them? They do a good job doing the glass and the bench, but the tops are dirty. I don't know who's in charge of that. Keith, I don't know, is that you? Is that you, Sean? But if you are, tell them to clean the tops of them for us, please. We pay for that. $57,000 to Zine Kate Consultants, just to go out and see how a slurry coat was completed? That's gotta be the easiest construction project out there, but we're gonna pay them $56,000. $26,000 to League of California Cities. Remember in November, Scott, you went to Long Beach, they had the meeting, and you wanted to have that meeting about, you know, being bullied by Sacramento and this all getting pushed down, you put it on the agenda and all that, and you went up there to have it, and guess what? There wasn't a quorum, was there? So that whole thing fell apart, and you said, "Well, December, we'll vote on it again." Never heard about it. So League of California Cities for $26,000, and the ADU thing, they didn't help us there, they didn't help you with your other thing. So why are we paying membership to this thing for? We're gonna spend $9,000 for Ralph Anderson Association for Class and Compensation Study Fee? Doesn't make sense. My favorite, $40,000 a month to Kidder Matthews Monthly Service. If you multiply that times 12, that's a half a million dollars we're paying Kidder Matthews. Okay? We're only paying $36,000 a month to keep this place clean. That's another 500,000. So between cleaning and Kidder, we haven't got to utilities yet, we're almost a million dollars a month. Okay? I don't think people in the residents of the city know that. How much are we spending on this facility? Last month, last meeting, Mr. Servo, I asked you about the flock group, were these the last 17 cameras? Did anyone respond back to me? No? But I'm, you know, Servo says I'm disrespectful. I ask a flat question. Is this for more cameras or existing? I can't get an answer. Innovative cleaning, like I said, $33,000 a month a lot. Joseph A. Goncalves and Son, $3,800 from consulting. What are they doing for? Nobody tells you anything. Okay? So I bring this up black and white, but you guys can't answer any of the questions.
Thank you for your comments. Number six.
Our speaker is Andrew O'Connor.
And who's number seven?
Andrew O'Connor.
Okay.
Andrew O'Connor, Fiddle Ranch. Number six has to do with this professional agreement with Teresa Dobbs for Housing and Realization Services. I read the memo, took a lot of notes, called up Adrian yesterday, 11:20 in the morning, went over the notes of questions I had. We spoke for 27 minutes. He's, "Yeah, okay, that's good. Yeah, I understand. Yeah, that's not clear, Mr. O'Connor. Yeah, I got the numbers here. Uh-huh, right. Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah, we should put that down." But I had a good conversation, understanding it. Can you understand my side of point, his side of point? We ended it, he says, "Mr. O'Connor, I'll work on this and have it done, and I'll give you the numbers you want in the afternoon." Like, okay, good. Hung up, didn't get anything. "Oh, he's probably busy." Called over this morning, "Hey, Adrian, it's Mr. O'Connor. How are those numbers going? Left him a voicemail. Never called me back." Is that disrespectful, Mr. Servo? Is it? Mayor Protem, is that disrespectful? Did Adrian hang up the phone and go yell at him and say, "O'Connor was disrespectful to me yesterday"? We had a good conversation. I wanted to pre-plan before I came to the meeting, get the data, get the information. I thought we had a good thing. He said he was gonna call me back. If he could call me back, because he had to do something, "Hey, Mr. O'Connor, sorry. I got tied up, can't get those numbers here." Okay. Well, I could have a relationship with Adrian, I could have a relationship with all of everybody here on the staff, but he didn't call me back. So I can't make a real complete presentation, but I did send a simple chart over to you. And what it shows, this, the top chart shows.
Please direct your comments.
Yeah, okay. The top shows number of applications. It's kind of, kind of static. By the data that's here, and Adrian agrees, application status is the same. However, she wants more money. It's going up. So why are we paying more, but she's doing the same applications? It's kind of an input-output kind of thing, all right? And Adrian agreed. But maybe after he put the numbers down, he looked at it, he says, "This doesn't look good for us." And it doesn't look good for us, because, once again, we're overspending for services, and you guys don't seem to care. I care, it's my tax money.
Mr. Andy? Mr. Connor?
Oh. Okay, now, item number six, Mayor Protem would like to respond.
Well, I don't want to respond. I want to thank Teresa Dobbs for the wonderful job she does. The fact is, the money comes from CBDG grants, and this money goes out to people who are on fixed incomes to get their houses fixed, and it basically, it's a home loan so they can fix their homes. And it's almost like a reverse mortgage. So the money comes, once again, from CBDG grants. And Teresa does a great job, and she deserves every penny she makes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Brings us to item number seven.
One speaker, Andrew O'Connor.
Mayor Protem Pecano, I appreciate your rebuttal. It's a factual rebuttal, makes sense. I'm aware of CBDG.
Mr. O'Connor, this is not a rebuttal to that. It was a good comment. Your comment made sense, and he responded to talking that, does money come, so let's keep on item number seven, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Number seven, again, is here on the intersection. I reviewed it, had questions. I think you see her, yeah, there he is, over there. Left your voicemail? Yep. Left your voicemail. I want to go over some of the details for the meeting. Hi, this is Andrew O'Connor, I'm going over this and that, had some questions. Give me a call back. Click. Didn't call me back, did you, Doug? Okay. It's okay, it's fine, you're probably busy, I understand. Good guy, I think you do a good job, no issues here. I'm just looking at this drawing that I had, and the One Direction eastbound on Bake, it shows widen to add a dedicated right turn lane. There's already a dedicated right turn lane there now, right? So why is this, these are the questions I was asked over the phone. It says widen to add dedicated right turn lane. Well, it's already there. Okay? So I understand why that's there. There's a huge SEC, I think, 45-kilowatt post there? Is that coming out, or is that staying? Because that's pretty significant. And then it says relocate SEC transmission poles. That was already done in another phase, wasn't it? Earlier phase that was done. We read, that's already done, that stuff's been moved. The wooden poles are actually cut in half, so that phase is done. I don't understand why it's on here again. And then where Tribuco comes to Bake, it says widen to add a fourth through lane. So I had questions on that, too. So, once again, I reached out to the staff to ask these questions way ahead of, before tonight's meeting, and they didn't call me back.
Mr. O'Connor, thanks for your comment, and I'll get you some comments on that intersection for the flow of traffic. Thank you for your comments. Do we have anything further?
No, that completes our comments for consent.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve all of them, including the Housing Authority Consent Calendar, one and two.
I will second that, Mayor.
So, first and second, all in favor? Okay, this brings us.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. Item number eight, commission appointments by City Council. Madam City Manager, please introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. We will have a brief introduction by our city clerk, Lisa Bergland.
Mayor and City Council, we're here this evening to make appointments to our city commissions. Could you get your pass on the slide? And just a little bit of background information about our commission appointments. The City Council appoints its members to different commissions pursuant to Chapter 2.06 of the Municipal Code, and this code provides a process for the City Council to initiate and implement the one-to-one appointment approach for the public appointment process. Applications were accepted online through the city's online portal. Incoming applications were tracked by my team and the city clerk's office, and this year we will have appointments made by Mayor Protem Pecano, Councilmember Servo, and one appointment by Councilmember Tetemar on the Traffic and Parking Commission. So on December 17th, Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Servo and Mayor Protem Pecano were both sworn in for their next term. The call for commission applications was open on December 20th. It ran until January 20th, in which that application period closed. And on January 24th, the applications were forwarded to the council members for review. Altogether, we received four applications for the Community Services Commission, 12 applications for the Planning Commission, and eight applications for the Traffic and Parking Commission. So tonight, I would recommend that you make appointments in the following order. Planning Commission, starting with Mayor Protem Pecano, followed by Councilmember Servo, then moving to the Traffic and Parking Commission, beginning with Councilmember Servo, followed by Mayor Protem Pecano, and then Councilmember Tetemar, and then finally, the Community Services Commission, with Councilmember Servo appointing first, followed by Mayor Protem Pecano. At this time, I'd like to give the floor back to the mayor to move on with those appointments.
Yeah, we'll start with public comments. Do we have any public to speak?
No, I do not.
Okay. That then, let's begin. Planning Commission, Mayor Pecano, do you have a choice?
Well, before I make a choice, I'd just like, first, to thank all those people that submitted applications to this, and I wanted to go over a little bit about how I went about choosing. Well, I have, in 2020, I chose three commissioners, and my plan was, if they all submitted, to put in. But I did read all the applications, and I did look, like, what I looked at is if they did anything with the city. So as you look at it, for an application, it asked, hey, have you done anything? Are you a graduate of the Leadership Academy? Well, yes or no? So I saw a lot of applications that had no's, or have, did you participate in any city groups? No, 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 no. So, anyway, for my Planning Commission, and I called most of these, most of the applicants over the weekend. So for my Planning Commission, I want to nominate Jordan Vilwak for planning.
I will second that.
Okay. That's it.
That's it? We don't have to vote on that, correct? Okay. Please, there was been a motion, we do have to vote? Okay. Then that, thank you, congratulations, Jordan. Now, that brings me to Councilman Servo.
Thank you, Mayor. I also have a statement that I'd like to read before I talk about my commission appointments. And again, I want to echo- And again, I want to echo Mayor Protem Pecano's comments in that we had 19 unique submissions for these three different commissions. And so much talent, so much experience, so much heart and passion for wanting to serve the community. Many of the people have gone through the Leadership Academy. They've served in various aspects of the city. And this is really commendable. So, if you're not chosen tonight, my encouragement would be, in two years, there will be nine different appointed points to these different commissions available. I would encourage you, if you didn't make it this year, to please do that again in a couple of years. And my process of going through this was to, I read every single one of the submissions. I had conversations with various people and some of the applicants. I looked at LinkedIn. I looked at a variety of different things to help me come up with the wisest decision possible, looking for what in my mind would be the best person to address the issues we have currently and the ones that we're going to face coming. So, again, I want to just conclude with an amount of gratitude for our existing commission members and the ones that are being appointed tonight. Thank you so much. My choice, then, for the Planning Commission is Tom Graeble.
I will second that.
Congratulations, Mr. Graeble. Let's move to Traffic and Parking. Councilman Servo, do you have a choice? Out of those excellent candidates we had?
Yes, again, great candidates. And the great work that James Faust has done is my nominee to continue on that Traffic and Parking Commission. Do I have consensus?
Second.
Second.
Congratulations, Jim.
Congratulations, James.
Great work. I have honor to work with him. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pecano, for your Traffic and Parking Commission.
For my Parking and Traffic Commission, I want to nominate Gerardo Camarena.
Second that. It's honor to work with him as well.
Congratulations, Gerardo. And Mr. Teddermer, you have a Parking and, Parking and Traffic Commission.
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Also, I want to echo comments of my colleagues. As somebody who's served on both Planning and Traffic and Parking, it's a great opportunity to learn more about the city and a great time I had serving in those capacities many years ago now. I would like to nominate Anil Patel.
Mr. Patel, I will second that. Mr. Patel, congratulations. Now that brings us to the final commission that we have is Community Service. Mr. Servo, do you have a commissioner?
I do. Again, some very high-qualified people for this position on the Community Services Commission. I nominate Usto Fuentes.
I will second that.
Mr. Fuentes, congratulations. Mr. Pecano. Mayor Protem.
So, I lost one of my members, but I, give me one second. I gotta make sure that I spoke to this person. I would like to nominate Zia Jones.
Do we get a second?
Is that for Traffic and Parking, or for Community Services?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Community Services, well, I don't, I, I'd like an extension. I mean, Zia Jones is, well, the person I had picked, got picked. And so, I, I have to now-
I'm, I'm okay with that, and I'll support that.
Well, just give me two weeks to talk to Zia Jones and see if she'll accept.
I'd rather our council members feel comfortable and have communicated with their commissioners, so I will support that.
So, I did speak with Zia. But, like I said, the person I had picked got selected already, so-
But Zia's in the Traffic and Parking-
I know, I know that. I know that.
So for the Community Services, we have four applicants, right?
Yes.
And she's not in that?
She's not in there. So, I spoke to her. She was one of the conversations I had with this weekend. And I liked her resume. However, I had picked somebody else before her. But the, Mr. Teddermer, I think, I think this was like the white elephant game. He took my, he took my gift. So, I'd like, I'd like in two more weeks, so I can, or, well, you know what? Am I able to pick Zia? And if she declines, we'll just look again. So I'll pick Zia Jones.
I will second that. I think you are very firm on your pick here, and I also read her resume as well.
Okay. So, that completes our commission. Congratulations, everybody. We're thrilled that have you on board and helping us guide the city. So, this brings us to item number nine. Madam Clerk, could you please read?
Item nine is consideration of amendment to existing Lake Forest Housing Rehab Program Policy and Procedures Manual.
Mr. Mayor, tonight we'll have a presentation by our Economic Development Manager, Adrian Grahava.
Great. Thank you, City Manager Rose, and good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before you for consideration is the Amendment to the Housing Rehabilitation Policy and Procedures Manual. The current policy and procedures manual was last updated in 2008 and did not include paint program guidelines. At this time, staff is proposing to update the policy and add paint program grant guidelines. The City of Lake Forest offers housing programs to homeowners. They include the Housing Rehabilitation Loan Program and the Paint Grant Program. The Housing Rehabilitation Program offers loans to income-eligible owners of mobile homes, condos, and single-family residential homes to address items that need repair. It provides zero and low-interest loans, up to $30,000 for single-family homeowners, and up to $15,000 for mobile homeowners. The Paint Program offers grants to income-eligible homeowners for the purpose of painting the exterior of homes. The programs were previously funded through redevelopment agency and federal funding. However, in 2012, redevelopment agencies went away, including funding for these programs. The city now uses federal funding through the CDBG program for the two programs. All services are provided by a consultant, Teresa Dobbs, and her associate, Rachel Berg. And programs are marketed broadly through the leaflet, HOA meetings, the city's website, and social media channels. Over the prior three fiscal years, the city issued 38 rehab loans, totaling approximately $584,000. When loans are paid off, money is placed into a separate fund that can only be used on housing rehab loans. Over the prior three fiscal years, the city has issued 15 paint grants, totaling approximately $75,000. The following slides will cover the proposed changes to the Policy and Procedures Manual. Staff proposed the following. Removal of references to the Housing Authority as loans are currently paid out through the revolving loan fund or CDBG entitlement funds. Change the program administrator to the city manager or designee. Update language regarding the approval committee. Remove emergency loans and grants, and other changes such as monetary value of assets, addition of language to homes in trust, and the requirement to pay the loan off upon death or sale of the property, and fees associated with payback of the loan. Staff also proposed adjusting the loan amount from a cap of $30,000 for single-family homes and $15,000 for mobile homes, up to $40,000 and $25,000 respectfully. Staff also proposed creating a paint grant limit of $12,000 for single-family homes and $7,500 for mobile homes. Reasons for the proposed changes include the cost of home improvements increasing, as well as CDBG's timeliness standard of spending down funds. Lastly, staff included language in the proposed update, which would allow the program administrator to adjust the loan amount based on CPI rounded up. And we have an example below. For instance, if CPI adjusts the loan by $650, it will go from $20,000 to $21,000, as we're rounding up. At this time, staff is recommending the City Council approve amendments to the Lake Forest Housing Rehabilitation Policy and Procedures Manual. Myself and Teresa Dobbs, the city's housing rehab and paint program consultant, are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the great presentation, and this is a great program. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public to speak?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, bring you back to council. Any comments or motions?
Comments?
Comments, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. This may be too fresh for you to answer, Adrian, but in light of the, the Trump administration, my understanding is that they've announced that one of the DOGE amendments might be to eliminate the CDBG program. And if that was the case, does that then take some kind of effort for us to accelerate some of these things? Tell me what that would actually mean for us to be able to take action or not.
So I think that remains to be seen. We are actively monitoring the situation. We do have a CDBG consultant that works with not only us, but other cities in South Orange County. So we are actively monitoring kind of what the Trump administration is ultimately going to do with CDBG. That being said, I think, long-term, if it were to go away, then these programs that we fund with CDBG money would need to be reassessed and determined if we would continue funding them out of general fund money, or if another special fund were to be created to fund these projects.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, Adrian, hey, thanks for the presentation. Can you explain what CBDDG means and how we get that money? And how much, or, not how much, but can you explain CBDDG?
Sure. So, CDBG is Community Development Block Grant. It's a federal program from the Housing and Urban Development Department of the federal government. It's money that we receive on an annual basis. The allocations for the money is approved by the City Council on an annual basis as part of our annual action plan, which will go before the City Council in May of this year. The city receives approximately a half a million dollars. And that half a million dollars is divided into separate categories, including subrecipients. So we partially fund Families Forward, South County Outreach, using these dollars. We also fund CDBG administration, and then some public works projects, and these housing rehab loan and paint programs.
All right, thank you. So, that's, that's federal money that we get. So it doesn't come out of our, our coffers. It comes from federal money. I get, I understand that, or I get that it's, it's still tax money, but this is federal money that comes to us. And we, in turn, give it to those that are maybe on fixed income, or some people that qualify for it, correct?
That is correct. Income-eligible recipients.
Thank you.
Councilman, you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wonder, how much is the cost of administering this program?
So it ranges, on an annual basis, I want to say we're roughly around $30,000 in program administration for the Housing Rehabilitation Loan Program and Paint Program.
So that, that percentage of the administration cost is going to go down if we be able to increase the size of the fund, right?
Sure, yes.
And how much is the demand for the program?
We all, we have relatively steady demand for the program. Over the last three years, I think we've been right around 10 applications for, excuse me, 10 approved loans for housing rehabilitation, and then about five approved grants for the Paint Program.
My thinking is, there's a talk about affordability. Also, there's affordability to maintain your housing in the communities. That's why we cover a mobile home, we cover low income here. So I was just wondering if this make any sense? Or it can worse commission study from the staff that we, we consider to increase the funding to the program from a general fund or other part of the funding we have? That's my comment here. Thank you. Yeah, I'm done.
Okay.
I'll mark it down.
What, no, I was gonna, I, yeah, I really like this program, and I'd like to move this my item.
Yeah, I will second that, and I hope, you know, we can take a deeper look into it, and whether we can spend this program in the future. Thank you.
Please cast your votes. Thank you, Adrian. Great report. Great program.
That motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Madam Clerk, this brings us to item number 10.
Item number 10 is the Code Enforcement Update.
Madam City Manager, please introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have an update on code enforcement, what they've been up to during 2024. And our Assistant Director of Community Development, Amy Stonage, is here to provide that overview for you.
Well, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, I have a brief presentation on code enforcement activity for 2024. In my presentation, I'll define code enforcement and the types of cases we handle. I'll explain which factors affect code enforcement cases. And finally, I'll highlight the tools for success as set forth in our strategic initiatives. So what does code enforcement do? Well, they're responsible for maintaining and improving the character, aesthetic quality, and property values within the city. The division enforces related to public nuisance, public maintenance, zoning, building, and health and safety. Their goal is to ensure that the residential and commercial neighborhoods are well-maintained and safe. When violations occur, the staff uses the education-based approach to help residents and business owners resolve issues quickly. If necessary, they can escalate enforcement actions, including issuing fines or filing civil action. Over the past three decades, the city has experienced population growth and aging infrastructure. Until recently, the code enforcement staffing levels remained unchanged. Historically, code enforcement officers worked during business hours. But starting in 2022, a part-time officer was added to work weekends. And in December, two new full-time temporary officers were hired to cover evening hours with a focus on illegal vending enforcement. In total, there are four full-time positions, one part-time, and a supervisor. The Code Enforcement Division reports to the Community Development Director and Assistant Director. As with many years passed, the Code Enforcement Division handles several hundred cases. The resolution rate for 2024 was 79%, which is slightly lower than the 85% resolution in '23. Last year proved especially challenging with one retirement and the increased workload due to unpermitted sidewalk vendors. It should be noted that vending cases are not included in the statistics shown here. This diagram illustrates the locations of code violations over the past year. Despite its smaller size, the area south of Geronimo Road has the highest number of cases. This accounts for 51% of cases citywide. This is mainly due to higher density, older properties, which need more frequent maintenance. So what are the factors that contribute to code enforcement cases? Well, the two factors that I'll discuss this evening are the city's aging infrastructure of homes and buildings, and the increasing costs of maintenance, and changes in state law and new case law. As noted in the city's housing element, nearly half of the homes in the city are older than 40 years, with 57.6 of the units built in 1980 or later, and another 32.9 built between 1970 and '79. Homes built after 1970 typically need minor repairs, while older homes often require more maintenance and significant upgrades. As it affects code enforcement cases, older homes often need more exterior maintenance and landscape improvements. In April of 2024, the City Council adopted code amendments for a new property maintenance code and revisions to the public nuisance code. The focus of these changes was to establish clearer standards for property owners when addressing violations. For example, the municipal code was clarified for the need to secure vacant or abandoned property, as is shown on this slide. So this is in line with the goals of the code amendments and the notices sent to the public, which have been updated and are shown before you. The new style, shown on the right, features a refreshed layout that is easier to understand and clearly outlines the path to compliance for a recipient. As previously mentioned, recent housing laws in California have introduced significant changes to address the housing- significant changes to address the housing crisis. These changes also impact code enforcement. Examples include SB 9, SB 1211, and SB 684. These allow the development of more units on residential property with relaxed parking and development standards through streamlined permitting processes. This increases the workload of code enforcement as they encounter secondary effects and ensure compliance with new regulations. State law, and more specifically, recent case law, dealing with short-term rentals, boarding houses, and group homes often change. These changes place additional responsibilities on code enforcement to ensure compliance and maintain housing standards. Another change in state law that affected code enforcement is sidewalk vending. Sidewalk vending is legal. The state approved this in 2018. The act decriminalized sidewalk vending, but it allowed cities to place reasonable conditions on vending. It also required vendors to abide by local health regulations. For a vendor to operate in Lake Forest, we require them to first obtain a health permit from Orange County Healthcare Agency. Once they obtain it, they can apply for a sidewalk vendor permit through the Public Works Division, Department, excuse me. Unpermitted sidewalk vendors selling hot food were a concern in 2024. Early enforcement efforts faced challenges due to reliance on the Orange County Healthcare Agency for confiscations. In July of 2024, the City Council passed an ordinance allowing staff to impound items from noncompliant vendors. First, security guards were hired to deter vendors from setting up. Secondly, two new code enforcement officers were hired to focus on this issue. Our new officers have been working diligently in the evening hours seven days a week. With new staffing and these measures, code enforcement has been more effective in addressing unpermitted vendors. Since the ordinance was implemented in 2024, staff have issued over 100 notices to unpermitted sidewalk vendors. Most have complied with only seven impounds necessary. On average, staff now contacts one or two vendors daily. These are typically small-scale, small-food or flower vendors. Over the past several years, the city's been working with a consultant to identify a neighborhood in need, do a door-to-door survey, hold a pop-up event, and draft assessment of a community needs. This assessment is then utilized by city staff and contract agencies to address concerns of the residents and business owners. For example, we offer neighborhood watch assistance, initiate big trash pickup, conduct proactive code enforcement, and inform neighbors of upcoming CIP projects for their community. This is all in line with the strategic business initiative number 29. Another strategic plan initiative is a community preservation program, where the city will team up with a consultant to initiate a new volunteer program. This program consists of volunteers from residents, local businesses, nonprofits, and faith-based organizations to address property maintenance services to those in need. The ultimate goal is to foster ongoing community pride and engagement to maintain neighborhoods with limited city resources. As our community ages, property maintenance continues to be a focus of code enforcement. Unintended results of new state laws and case law have posed new challenges to code enforcement. However, our strategic planning initiatives are intended to address these challenges, particularly in areas with the most code cases. New code enforcement staffing has provided better coverage for the city, including evenings and weekends. Management will continue to monitor the activities and effectiveness of these new staff members. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions, as well as Winston Karuga, our interim code enforcement supervisor.
Do we have any questions? Councilman Servo.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. Thank you, Amy, for the presentation. And now, looking back on what happened in 2024 when we first identified the illegal vendors and then monitored that, tried a couple of things to get that going, passed ordinances, brought on additional staff, we were able to quell this activity that many of our residents were concerned about in terms of public safety and just damage to the existing businesses. So big-time kudos to, you know, the staff and also our law enforcement partnership there, code enforcement officers, and the staff just to make this program very systematically get out there and get it done and taking care of it. So I'm really happy to see the results of this. We weren't sure exactly how long it was going to take to mitigate this whole situation, but it's been done really in record time. So again, thank you very much. And our residents should be very pleased in the actions that we all took to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Did we do public comments or?
No, we do have one speaker on this item.
Public comment?
Okay, yes, it's Andrew O'Connor.
Mr. O'Connor. Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
Andrew O'Connor, Foothill Ranch. So last council meeting, I talked about code enforcement. I guess I shook the tree, and here Amy shows up with a presentation, providing some of the answers, some of the questions I had answers, but maybe a little more confused. First thing it says, how many officers are on staff? I think she said four full-time, okay? But then said something about retirement. So are we gaining or losing? I don't know. Didn't make sense to me. One part-time was expressed, and something else I couldn't understand. Is this adequate? Is this enough? It sounds to me like it's not. If it's not adequate, City Manager, what are the plans to hire more people? There's a backlog of cases. It says right here, 136 cases. What's the oldest? Two months, three months, a year? I mean, your staff needs to do a better job when we put these charts out. I mean, for a resident, come up here and ask as many questions I have to do? Okay, so remaining cases, 136. Well, what's the oldest? Two years old, two months old, two weeks old? I don't know. Percent closed, 79%? Is that what we want? I think we want a higher one than that. Improving the overall quality of life in the community? What did I talk about? Foothill Plaza. I brought that up. Why didn't code enforcement do it? It's the gateway to the civic center. You guys are saying you're proactively enforcing stuff on the Foothill Plaza, and it's still not done. You guys still haven't done anything with it. You got a sign that's up there now for 21 months. That's being proactive, allowing to keep it up there? On the other corner, dimension side, dimension liquor. What did I do? I did five of them on Sunday. You got, the liquor store's got three California lottery signs out there. One's on the sidewalk blocking the pedestrian right of way. The grass is dead. You got dead signs, a lot of issues there, you know, and then today, so I sent it out, got the number. You know what the answer I get back to that on all those? It says "resolved." What does "resolved" mean? Does that mean like the signs got picked up, the grass is getting painted, that sign's going to be done? "Resolved" to me says it's finished, but how can it be resolved in 48 hours? And that's what happened with Foothill Plaza, too. "Resolved." It's not resolved. It's still bad. So you just say you're proactively improving the life in the community. It's not happening. I disagree with this. It's a flawed report. It's a flawed report. I hope the next time a staff does a report, they do a better job. And with CDBG tonight, Adrian was supposed to go first. I get to talk afterwards. You guys put me up here first. I didn't know he was going to do a presentation. But tonight Amy did hers, so now I get to speak. Did you guys get this stuff straightened out?
Thank you for your comments, Mr. O'Connor. And that's received and filed. There'll be no action taken on that. And so, Madam City Clerk, or Madam City Manager, do you have anything to add?
I have nothing further this evening.
Okay. Councilman Servo.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things regarding the youth in Lake Forest I just want to update everybody on. This weekend at the sports park, one of the gems that we have as an amenity here in Lake Forest, we hosted the AYSO Section Tournament. Now, AYSO is structured into regions, areas, and sections. These are three sections from Los Angeles, Inland Empire, Orange County, and San Diego County, representing over 125,000 players down to 57 teams that competed this weekend at the sports park. These tournaments used to be held at multiple locations, and the fact that we've got this fantastic sports park to be able to do that, the comments and walking around and seeing the kids play and hearing what a great venue this is, to be able to just consolidate it onto one place, really successful event. And of course, our city staff supports that with all sorts of trash pickup and things like that. So great job there. Secondly, Mayor Voits formed an ad hoc committee for Eagle Scout. And the impetus for that was, we wanted to make sure that our scouts, who are getting ready to go for their eagle, have a procedure and an awareness and an understanding of that process, so we can keep those projects that they're going to be able to do right here in Lake Forest. We had a really fantastic, productive meeting with staff, and it looks like we got pretty much things all resolved. We'll have information on our website. We're going to be proactively reaching out to the scout leaders to make sure that they know for their scouts who are going for their eagle that they can do their projects right here in Lake Forest, and we're going to partner together to get that done. So update on those two. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Servo. Councilman Teddermer.
Nothing further tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Teddermer. Councilman Benjamin Yu.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things. First of all, we have a few new faces to the commissions. I think for their service and dedication, also I note a few individuals because of limits of the spots we have unable to return to the commissions. Jolene, Jolene Fuentes, Katie Goat, and Victor Shaw. I had the chance to listen to some of their meetings, and they all long-term residents now sit at Lake Forest. I want to thank you for their work and the contribution to the city, and I hope they return to commission in the future. And another comment is, I want to thank staff for their work. We have the renovation of the Barker Park next to Baker Ranch reopen on January 27th, and I have received a lot of good feedback from the residents and basically my community here. And again, thank you for the great work. That's it.
Council, thank you, Councilman Yu. Mayor Protem Pequeno.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Well, once again, City Manager, great job. Winston, awesome job. Amy, awesome job. Teresa left. She knows that I love that we help those that are on fixed incomes, you know, have a better life. So thank you all. And thank you to my colleague for taking my applicant, and that's all I have.
I want to thank all those current and past and new planning commissioners, community service, and traffic commissioners. You know, we're only as good as the people around us, and the fact is, we had a wealth of people that responded to the requests for commissions, and I want to thank each and every one of them. I want to congratulate those that are welcoming aboard City of Lake Forest, and we thank you. There's plenty of avenues. We're trying to work in more avenues for people to get involved with the city. So thank you so much for attending tonight. Thank you, colleagues. And with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.